Please come to order, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson.
Present.
Oliver.
Here.
Ford.
Present.
Eggersmith.
Here.
Mattingly's absent. Sutfin.
Here.
Watson.
Present.
Thank you, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the Vice Mayor lead us?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin this evening with our consent agenda, and the first item there is approval of Town Council minutes for June 3, 10, and 17. We have a Resolution 7A25, setting the regular meeting dates for Blacksburg Town Council in the year to come. We have a Resolution 7B25, referring proposed subdivision and zoning ordinance amendments to the Planning Commission for Review. We have a CUP, a Conditional Use Permit 25-1, a request for an outdoor educational and recreational camp at 2190 Merrimack Road, and our action there will be to schedule that public hearing for August 12. And that is the next time that we will be in these chambers. Ordinance 2078, an ordinance to amend Town Council, Town Code Sections 16-116, 16-200, 16-203, 16-204, 16-207, and 16-506, and to add a new section 16-123 to update the Town Procurement Code and incorporate provisions from the Virginia Public Procurement Act. We will set our hearing on that item also for August 12. We're going to go to public, wait, wait, wait. Forgot about that. Okay, what is council's approval, what is council's wish on the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Oliver.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Eggersmith.
Aye.
Sutfin.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Moving on now to the public hearings, and we're going to take them a bit out of order. So we'll begin with Item C, and that is Ordinance 2079, rezoning .655 acres of land at 103 Jefferson Street and East Roanoke Street from R5 Transitional Residential to Planned Residential District zoning.
And Matthew Sampa has the staff report.
This is a request to rezone .655 acres at 103 Jefferson Street from R5 Transitional Residential to PR Plan Residential. The request has been brought by the applicant, Balzer and Associates, on behalf of the owner, Shaw Development LLC. Development, highlighted in blue, is located near the corner of Jefferson Street and East Roanoke Street, across from Westview Cemetery. It includes 10 detached single-family homes with 20 bedrooms total, and parking for 20 vehicles off of Jefferson Street, and six bicycles within the open space. It is primarily surrounded by residential uses, including single-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings. Rezoning requests are evaluated for their conformity to the comprehensive plan, the relationship of the proposal to the general planning program of the town, and whether or not the change furthers the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the community, the need and justification for the change, which is the applicant's burden to prove, and the effect of the proposed change on the surrounding neighborhood and public facilities. The site's future land use designation is medium-density residential. It's also in an urban and walkable neighborhood, and Roanoke Street is planned for future sidewalk and bike lane improvements per the Past to the Future Plan. The PR zoning district allows flexibility in meeting the district's purpose, enabling applicants to propose standards suited to their development. In return, the submitted plan, application, and proffers are binding, and any major changes require a public hearing and amendment to the PRD. In the zoning ordinance, there are three types of regulations that govern new development. The Planned Residential District allows an applicant to propose most of the district's standards, but use and design standards and development standards still apply unless modifications are specifically requested. The subject area is currently zoned and surrounded by R5 Transitional Residential, except for the cemetery, which is zoned R4 Low Density Residential. Although the development includes a density of 30.5 bedrooms per acre, exceeding the limits established by the R5 zoning district and the site's future land use designation, the applicant has proffered an occupancy standard which limits units to either a family plus one unrelated individual, or no more than two unrelated individuals, which is more restrictive than what is permitted under current R5 regulations. The PR district requires a minimum of 20% open space. However, due to the project being less than two acres, the applicant may apply for a reduction and are asking for 13% open space, or 3,920 square feet, which will include a flexible programming space whose use can be determined in the future by the HOA. In regard to public infrastructure, the applicant has requested a variance from the standard 15-foot PUE requirement, and proposes a 7.5-foot private easement behind units 1 through 5, and a 7.5-foot PUE behind units 6 through 10, with utility conduits for future extensions. A new sidewalk is planned along East Roanoke Street, but a variance from the four-foot planning strip is requested due to steep terrain. Modifications are also requested to omit the required walkways along the edges of the parking lot, and the required planning islands, or tree penitulous, within the parking lot. At this public hearing on June 3, the Planning Commission voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval of the rezoning request, with two members absent. And here's a list of the modifications that applicant is requesting, that I've previously covered during the presentation. The proffer statement states that the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the Clydesview Plan Development rezoning application, with occupancy limited to a family plus one unrelated individual, or no more than two unrelated individuals, and all homes constructed as solar-ready. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. We will go on to the applicant's statement. I have one compelling question. Who is Clyde?
Okay, so Mitchum Plumbing?
That's what I thought. It was Clyde Mitchum.
That is. That is.
Did he own the land, or what?
He didn't, but he's buried across the street in the cemetery, so as we were working with Shaw, they wanted to do kind of a shout-out to Clyde.
He has been known by so many people, and meant a lot to so many people. He walked into our house one time. It was built in '59, and he walked into our house and he gave us the whole history of the plumbing. He said there was a leak in this corner, in the early 60s, and he could recite the whole thing.
Kevin Connor, who was with Shaw, who kind of came up with that idea, had known Clyde for a long time. They'd worked on cars together, so again, it was a little homage to him.
That's great. I'd love to hear that.
So I won't take a lot of time tonight, Mayor, and council. Good evening. Steve Semenos with Balzer and Associates, 80 College Street in Christiansburg. We're excited to be here tonight. Clydesview, we feel, is a very creative way to provide new, single-family housing near downtown. We were looking to create a unique solution to an infill development opportunity, and do so by proposing a community of for-sale, modestly-sized, and hopefully modestly-priced, single-family homes that hopefully will be more attainable than the homes in our town's traditional subdivisions. The smaller homes and smaller lots with minimal parking areas, minimizing utility, infrastructure, will help us keep, to help us keep construction costs down, and give us that fighting chance to keep these somewhat attainable. I'm not going to use the word affordable, but attainable, and so keep those under a typical market-price home. And we looked at this using a lot of the same ideals and criteria that the town, Planning Commission, and staff had looked through at the small-lot ordinance. So that's kind of how we came to this as an idea. You see the layout up in front of you. So it's a strange kind of L-shaped property with frontage on Jefferson Street and East Roanoke Street. The homes all face a common green, so the idea is kind of create a front porch community. All these homes, as you'll see in the presentation, have front porches, kind of a farmhouse-style, a little over 1,000 square feet, two-bedroom. All the parking would be off of Jefferson Street. One of the exceptions we asked for was about the parking islands. We have moved the parking back off the street a little bit more than what we're required to be, to give us some more room to buffer with landscaping in between Jefferson Street and the parking lot itself. Two spaces per unit. And again, you see a couple different green space areas, kind of the light, the light-green areas, one in the center, the center common between the units, and then just to the left of the units and adjacent to the parking lot. We had a couple different programmed elements we were going to put in there, and as we talked to Planning Commission, the recommendation was, why don't you leave it open for the HOA and the residents really to decide what's the best use of that space, as opposed to putting in a pergola, or a gazebo that might not get used, or a fire pit, or something like that. So we left that open based on Planning Commission's recommendations. I'm sorry, Mark.
If you have one, okay. Yep. Sorry about that.
So again, each home, a little over, thank you, a little over 1,000 square feet. We've got a lot of different uses around us, residential uses. We've got single-family rentals on either side of us. We've got multifamily behind us. We've got the duplex property on the other side of Jefferson Street. So again, a lot of different residential uses that we feel, from an infill standpoint, this does fit in. It's not too out of character. And obviously, the cemetery across the street. This is just the image of the homes, what they would look like. So again, kind of a farmhouse-style, front porch, one-way in and out, so you are forced kind of to come in your front door and live in your front door. So two bedrooms upstairs, two baths, and then a half-bath dining room, living room, and kitchen there on the main floor. We did have a couple of variances, as Matthew mentioned. One was the public sidewalk along Roanoke Street, the variance to the four-foot grass strip. As you all know, as you come down East Roanoke Street there, and our historical African-American cemetery is on the right before you get to this property, there are steps that lead up from the road. So there's a big, steep bank there. So if we held that four-foot grass strip, it would have pushed us further into that hillside. We would have ended up with a retaining wall in there as well, and could have created some utility issues. We do have three proffers that Matthew mentioned. I won't review those, but just kind of in closing, I do just want to say thank you to staff on this one. They really worked hard. It's a small, tight infill site, especially Carolyn Howard. She worked with us a lot on how we could get the utilities to work in here, to still meet Town Code. They gave us a little bit of flexibility on our public utility easements going up the side. So I do appreciate staff working with us on this. We're excited about this, and hopefully this can be done well, and maybe be a model for what we want to see in some of our other infill areas, especially that are walkable to downtown. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I love this idea, and I love the concept. What is the thought process in doing single-family units as opposed to duplex or town homes in a same?
To try to push a more owner-occupied opportunity, you know, for a young family, you know, a starter home, as opposed to putting in a duplex or a town home, especially downtown, we were afraid the field might fill more student. So the idea is try to stick it in a single-family, and try to create that idea of homeownership of a single-family home.
Any questions?
If you see this, sorry, Jerry, go ahead.
You can go first.
Curious if you see this being a model that would work elsewhere in town.
We certainly would hope so. Absolutely.
Mark, could you take it back to the illustration of the, yeah, yeah, that one. This is like the fourth time I've seen it, so you always get to see something new. I just wanted, one, I love it, like, you know, I gave a preview to the town council that Planning Commission gushed, and I think that's a fair statement, as well as the way the vote turned out. But I just wanted to point out, that light that's up there, that's a nice, the style of light, but really, all it's going to do is light the top of that roof. So I hope when you guys look at it, you might consider something different.
Okay, well, I'll make a note on that one.
But also, thank you for what you did by the time it went to Planning Commission, making it solar-ready. So that's, I did that with my house way back in the day. That makes future installation so much easier. So that's a great feature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will open it up now to public comment. If anybody would like to comment on Ordinance 2079, Clydesview. Seeing no one, we'll move on to action. What is council's pleasure?
I move approval of Ordinance 2079.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I just want to add from the, with the question that Liam added, that was the one thing, is we, at the Planning Commission level, and talking with staff and the applicant, we really feel like this is kind of a proof-of-concept one. You know, approve this, it gets built, and maybe it encourages other examples like this to occur, and create this, you know, ownership opportunity without shared walls for small and new families. So I'm really excited about this one.
I think in the future, with this as a proof-of-concept, perhaps revisiting the small-lots ordinance, and reconsidering the two-acre minimum for that kind of project, if this does appear to be something that folks are willing and interested in attaining.
Anyone else?
I would agree with my colleagues up here. I think this is a much-needed type of development in our community, and I hope that it becomes something that young families, or people aging in place, or people can find a home in this community, and I hope that there's more like it in the future.
The occupancy statement is good.
Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ford.
Aye.
Eggersmith.
Aye.
Sutfin.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Oliver.
Aye.
I think we'll move backwards now to the first couple of items we had scheduled. Are we, are we good to do that? Okay, very good. Then we will go on, not on, but back to Ordinance 2080, to amend Ordinance 2062, which rezoned 2.8 acres at 801 North Main Street. And it was rezoned from R5 Transitional Residential District to Planned Residential District zoning, and we're rezoning an additional parcel, or we're considering it. Also, Ordinance 2081, vacating about 2,981 square feet of town-owned alley right-of-way between the 800 block of North Main Street, the 100 block of Winston Avenue, and the 900 block of Progress Street Northwest. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. The two requests tonight will be presented in a single presentation. The first item we will be covering is the request to vacate approximately 3,000 square feet of an existing town-owned alley and other right-of-way. There is an existing alley that runs parallel to K-Bridge Street and Progress Streets that exits onto Main Street at a curbed cut near the Speedway Gas Station. This is an aerial image showing the location of the alley and the other two right-of-way areas near the corner of Progress Street and North Main Street, highlighted in yellow. The application exhibit shows the three areas to be vacated as well. As a reminder, this is a portion of the right-of-way that was vacated with the previous request. The current request simply completes the entire alley. The alley currently provides access to the rear of commercial properties along K-Bridge Street, Winston Avenue, and Progress Street. There are no residential uses with access to the alley. However, these properties are all subject to the rezoning request, and will no longer be in commercial use if the rezoning request is approved. The alley does not provide access to any other parcels. It is separated from the Speedway Gas Station by a retaining wall. Now we will review the overall rezoning requests. There are a number of properties involved in this request, and a number of individual property owners. The applicant is LV Collective, and the contract purchaser of all of the properties. The total rezoned area is approximately 3.1 acres, including the right-of-way area to be vacated. Currently, there are a number of buildings with a mix of uses, including commercial and warehousing, as well as vacant buildings. The amendment request includes the former Speedway Gas Station parcel, which was not a part of the previous 2024 request, which was approved earlier this year. This is the rezoned area shown in blue. It does include the subject area of the right-of-way vacation request, and the former Speedway Gas Station parcel. The amendment request includes the addition of the former Speedway Gas Station parcel, which allows the applicant to develop more of the site with units and additional commercial space. This is the concept plan that was provided in the application. Entrances to the parking garage are provided along Winston Avenue and K-Bridge Street. There is a separate entrance for commercial uses, which remains separated from the residential parking. The town home uses remain unchanged from the prior approved request. There is a large commercial component along Main Street. As a reminder, Section 1151 of the zoning ordinance outlines how commission and council should review all rezoning requests. The comprehensive plan future land use designation is split between commercial and medium-density residential along Winston Avenue. The comprehensive plan commercial designation does not contemplate residential density. However, residential uses are allowed in the implementing zoning districts. As a reminder, there are a number of competing goals and policies within the comprehensive plan as it relates to the proposed request. The parcel is located in an area designated for mixed use with student housing, even though it is designated as commercial on the future land use map. The Planned Residential District allows up to 10% of the gross land area to be developed with commercial uses. The applicant is proposing more than 8,000 square feet of commercial space, which equates to approximately 6% of the total PR land area. This image highlights the commercial areas in red, and the plaza space in green. The lobby and leasing area is also on this level in the remaining space along Main Street. In the zoning ordinance, there's a statement of purpose for each district. The Planned Residential District allows flexibility for applicants to determine the best standards that meet the intent of the proposed development and the district purpose. The intent of the district can be met in a number of ways. In exchange for flexibility, the application, plan, and proffers are binding. Any substantive changes would require the applicant to amend the PRD through the public hearing process. In this instance, because the new application includes a parcel that was not a part of the original application, an amendment to the PRD is the most appropriate course of action. Current zoning is planned residential and general commercial. In the zoning ordinance, there are three types of regulations that govern new development. The PR district allows an applicant to propose most of these district standards, but use and design standards and development standards still apply unless modifications are specifically requested. District standards apply to all development within a particular zoning district. The existing and proposed standards are found on the table on the screen, and as well in the staff report. The proposed setbacks and height for the amendment remains unchanged from the prior approved request. Open space is required as both a district standard in the PR district, and as use and design standard for town homes and multifamily. A minimum of 20% is required. The amendment request includes additional outdoor terrace spaces for residents, as well as indoor space such as lounge and fitness areas that exceed the minimum standard totaling at least 25%. Use and design standards govern the development of a particular use in any zoning district. The use and design standards for multifamily uses are intended to provide an attractive, street-oriented development with appropriate connections and open space. Most of the use and design standards for town homes pertain to physical appearance and the layout of the units, to provide a more single-family appearance than that of a larger monolithic multifamily building. This is the view of the multifamily building from Progress Street. You can see the building articulation and change of materials and color that break up the facade of the structure. In this image of the town home-style units, you can see that they appear to be three-story units arranged side-by-side, and retain a more individual-unit appearance than the multifamily building does. The parking standard of 1.1 parking spaces per bedroom accommodates resident-plus-guest parking, and is typical of student apartment living where unrelated individuals occupy bedrooms. The PR district allows an applicant to propose an alternate standard. The applicant's justification for a lower standard includes proximity to campus and downtown, and an adjacent bus stop. The amendment adds a proportional number of bedrooms and parking spaces, and so the parking ratio remains unchanged in the amendment to the rezon. The applicant is proposing nearly double the minimum parking for bicycles. The amendment request includes two bike rooms on the ground floor of the multifamily building, holding at least 420 bikes total. Additional bike parking is provided outdoors near the town homes, and some of that parking is covered. Landscaping is required to be provided per the zoning ordinance. The amendment shows the appropriate parking lot landscaping, street trees, and overall landscaping concept for an urban-style development. Signage should be evaluated for its appropriateness to the development and the surrounding area. The applicant has proposed a signage plan as part of the application. This slide shows several excerpts from the signage plan, showing several different types and sizes of proposed signage. Although there is existing sidewalk on some of the street frontages today, none of it has the required four-foot vegetative strip. The zoning ordinance requires that the applicant construct new sidewalk with vegetative strip, or request a modification to the standard. The applicant has requested this modification. The plan does show that there will be a new variable width landscape area between the sidewalk and the building, and this configuration may be more appropriate in an urban setting, as proposed. The amendment does include wider sidewalk than the minimum five-foot wide in all of the development. The stormwater concept plan has been approved. The applicant and the town are working to resolve and refine elements of the floodplain analysis throughout the site plan, site plan stage. The water services and sanitary services are approved and adequate to support the development. The amendment includes the relocation of a Blacksburg transit stop from North Main Street to Progress Street, as requested by BT, to better facilitate operations. There are two modifications, as outlined in the staff report and are seen on the screen. The proffer statement includes language for substantial conformance, maximum building height, a parking policy for residents, occupancy restrictions, a proffer for the proposed signage, a proffer for building energy efficiency, a contribution to the town's affordable housing fund, and compliance with stormwater management. Planning Commission did review this at their most recent public hearing, and voted approval, a recommendation for approval with a vote of 7 to 0, with two absent. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'm curious about something, and that is, last time we heard about this proposal, we heard that they were still trying to work out the details of the stormwater. So Carolyn, is this a question for you, or?
As we all know, this is a very complex issue here, what they're proposing with the channel under the building. And so there's still some i's to be dotted, t's to be crossed with the proposed model. But the existing model that models what's happening today has essentially been approved, and we just felt at this stage, we were comfortable where they were at. And we are working with them almost weekly on getting to that proposed model approval.
Okay, so what's the drop deadline?
When they submit for site plan, submittal, they have to provide us a complete report with everything finalized. And they have a, they have an outline from our consultant, AECom, who has been reviewing the floodplain study for us, and they have several bullets to revise, and assuming those are all taken care of, we should be good to go.
And if they aren't taken care of, we don't get started?
The site plan won't be approved. That's correct. Because that's where they have to start their construction, essentially, other than the demolition.
Yeah, because it's under everything.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Do we have other questions?
I just want to clarify, both of the modifications, those are exactly more or less like what we're in the initial.
Yes, they are. They have not changed.
That hasn't changed.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Questions? Thank you. Okay. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak to these two?
Applicant statements.
Applicant statement.
Oh, applicant statement, yes, okay.
Good evening. Pleasure to see you all again. Thank you again for your time and attention to this project. Thank you. For those of you who haven't seen it before, the graphic representation of the black and white represents what had been approved previously. The newer colored versions represent the updates to design. This particular image shows the extension of the retail storefront and retail additional space along Main Street, as well as the newly added public commercial open space. As we know, through the downtown Blacksburg strategy, this area has been targeted for mixed use and student development, specifically to help reduce the negative impacts on sprawl, traffic congestion, and housing affordability. As we've brought this slide before, it shows the surrounding neighborhood and the amount of single-family, non-owner occupied or rental projects. So we use this again to assert that the high barrier of entry and the additional units will help loosen that supply constraint. We are all too aware of some of the items that have transpired of the recent months in the Virginia Tech housing pipeline. And this slide is really to just highlight that area and show the extension of the project along Main Street to the hard corner of Progress and Main, with a total addition, including the requested vacation of alley for a total of 3.9, I don't think that's right, I think it's supposed to be 3.429 acres. This again, there were several questions about why we're coming at this time. I will leave this here if any questions still exist to come back and really talk about the milestones associated with the procurement of this last parcel. This is, again, a look to show that all of the stuff that you are viewing in the foreground from the original Main Street and Cambridge intersection remains unchanged, but the background shows some of the additional development that comes closer to the hard corner. And I'll just touch on real quickly our strategic approaches with this additional lot. What you'll see here is our ability to now shift over the storm channel, and this plays into almost everything that we've done. The original site plan shown to the upper right kind of expresses the loss of that area. Again, knowing the area very well, for all of you specifically, this is the Speedway site, 1,800 square feet of currently vacant retail. This is an explanation of how we have addressed the extension of the commercial area, which we did hear on our last application. So we wanted to make a purposeful effort to not only add approximately 3,200 square feet of retail along this area, but present it to Main Street with a green area or a common outdoor dining area right at the intersection. The public parking has also grown to meet the needs of this area, and the access to all of the frontage now enters through the garage into the common outdoor area for commercial space. We felt like this was, number one, it gave us the opportunity to add additional commercial area, and it got rid of what was a tunnel-like entry out to Main Street from the garage. This is a diagram of the new open-spaced updates, which you can see extends along Main Street, as well as enlarging two of the courtyards for the private use of the tenants. The total amount of increase was over 12,000 square feet. We're calculating this closer to 28% open space over the entire project and a significant amount above code minimum. The other thing that we heard loud and clear was parking on the last approval. So for this particular efficiency that's been provided by being able to relocate the stream, what you'll see is this is nearly a one-to-one add for parking. A lot of these are calculated with tandem spaces in mind, and these tandem spaces were thought of specifically in the questions about how to deal with long-term but inactive parking in the tenant base. The design revisions in plan, you'll notice there are some highlighted parking stalls, and you'll see more of them as we move from the lowest level at the Winston entry. You can see in the bottom right-hand corner is what we would define as our tandem stalls. So they're highlighted in yellow. We're still looking to line the Winston Avenue right-of-way with townhomes and units to, again, create that residential street feel. The original plan up to the right shows, again, the missing parcel. This, again, highlights the amount of additional retail. And, again, on the lower left, some additional tandem stalls. And this area, or this plan at the third level, which is really considered our mezzanine level, has a significant amount of tandem stalls, as you'll see highlighted in yellow. These would be a reduced cost for anyone that is parking their car here and would be organized in a way that these would be roommates associated with their own comings and goings. And if we can provide the ideal incentives with carpool parking, we would do that as the end parking spot. This just shows, again, a comparison of the overall layout from the larger image to the smaller in the upper right, and how those additional beds were applied. Again, moving upward, and then showing some of the setbacks associated with the top floor. And that was another thing that we recall very clearly from our last presentation. We needed to be sincerely making an effort at continuing these setbacks and setbacks along Main Street specifically, but any place that they were shown previously. And as you can see here, we're doing a couple of sections. One through the existing, on the bottom, that shows that very significant setback off of Main. And then, again, one story lower directly behind that. If you were to look on the next section up, you can, again, see a setback from Main Street accompanying that plaza is the facade of the commercial area. And then, again, an additional setback till you get to the residential stack beyond. And this is just a lengthwise section at some of those courtyards longitudinally. This is really to try to, again, explain in some detailed fashion the setbacks that we've applied here. And these are specific to the last application. But as you look and you can kind of compare Section A directly over the commercial area that has two setbacks overlooking the commercial plaza. Section B, which is a little further down, has two setbacks but is reduced by a story as it's closer to Main Street than Section A. And Section C looks very similar, again, reduced in overall height, but, again, pushed back from Main Street. Some of our designs that have been slightly enhanced, but overall have the same character as presented in the original. This would be coming around the corner at Main Street and opening onto the commercial plaza, seeing the commercial frontage face-on, stepping back to the opposite side of Main Street and looking across over the commercial plaza to the new addition. To the upper right is the comparison of the last application that was approved and what you would see there now. And, you know, I think at least the Plan Commission, as well as ourselves, feel very grateful to have the opportunity to bring back the commercial plaza in this orientation. This is looking specifically at the Main Street and Progress intersection back south. So you can see the crossover, and really, it may not be evident, but the treatment that you're seeing in brick here is the edge of the upper-level parking and then lower level, and then preceding the low grade is the storm channel. So we're wanting to continue, again, that two-story brick facade that is prevalent in the downtown area. Stepping back a little bit across the intersection of Progress and Main to this extension. And, again, what it looked like in the upper right in the previous approved application. You can kind of see the outline of the filling station shelter and the retail building itself, now replaced by a little bit of additional residential, as well as the commercial and the open space. So a final look at existing conditions. And then our overall comparison. Acreage under, just under, an additional half acre provided, around 103 beds, 45 units. Residential parking total adds were 96 stalls. That parking ratio, while not technical in a sense of including tandem parking, if we include that parking, comes out to 1.57. And the ratio for the addition-only is the 0.93, so nearly one-to-one. Retail, additional retail of 3,200 square feet. Additional frontage of commercial along Main Street is an additional 135 linear feet. Additional retail parking of 18 stalls. Additional open space of nearly 12,200 square feet. And our affordable housing donation, an additional 161,000, coming to an even 1.3 million. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I didn't think it could be done, but you guys are building even closer to my house. I'm looking forward to you guys experimenting with new methods of silent demolition over the next few months. But that aside, I do think this makes for a better project. Not just the addition of another 3,000 square feet of commercial space or moving the bus stop to Progress Street, or the 1.3 million proffered for affordable housing. Or even the aesthetics on the corner that I'll be looking at. But it's the 110 additional bedrooms that I think are going to be of the greatest benefit to our town. You know, like I've said to you a number of times, a rising tide lifts all ships, and I think that it's really a supply and demand problem, the rent inflation we have in Blacksburg. So I'll say I'm excited to see this project back with another 110 bedrooms.
Anyone else? Questions? Okay, thank you. Now, where am I? Do we have public comment on ordinances 2080 and 2081? Seeing none. What is council's pleasure on these two ordinances?
I believe we'll consider them separately, so I move approval of ordinance 2080.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Well, I'll start. So I did not support the initial rezoning when we did it earlier this year. I was concerned about the height. I felt if the height came down slightly, it would improve the density of the parking. And then I felt the building, initially a planning commission, didn't have enough setbacks. And setbacks. And so they did move, when it came to council time, they improved the setbacks and the feel of the building, the massing of it, and I did appreciate that. But they held firm on their height, and so I did not support it. Tonight, just like at Planning Commission, I will support this amendment. And for me, and I'm speaking strictly for myself, I feel like it's a different question tonight than before. The question tonight isn't anymore about really the height aspect, which concerned me and the density. It's really about this one little orphaned parcel, which in the initial rezoning just kind of stuck out there and was not very attractive. And, you know, I feared what would happen with that parcel. And so, and I'd asked multiple times if that parcel was available as we went through this long process. So I'm glad to see that it has finally come forward. And I just think, overall, this is a better-looking building and proposal with the addition of that. I appreciate some of the, you know, the addition of that allows them to move the channel. That allowed some better flow of the parking, as they explained it to us, the creation of these extra parking spaces. The extra commercial is important, as well as the open space. You know, and finally, I am also glad that they rounded up to a nice even number for the affordable housing. For all those reasons, I will support it tonight.
I, too, did not initially support this project when it came to us, but because that has passed and that is the underlying zoning, this feels like a different question, and I feel comfortable approving it tonight.
Well, I might as well go next. I think it is a great location for student housing. I've always thought that. I think this proposal has definite improvements over the original. But unlike Jerry, the original proposal for me was just too dense, and now we have 100 more beds. Again, I think it's a great spot for student housing, but I think that's too many beds for that location. And I was originally concerned about the parking ratio being woefully inadequate, and that really hasn't changed. And so for those two reasons, I am not going to support it.
Thank you. Michael?
I made the motion, and I'm in support of this. As others have alluded to, what's in front of us isn't, if we vote against it, then the project goes away. What's in front of us is, if we vote in favor of it, this makes the changes that have been presented to us in the presentation tonight. If we vote against it, it goes back to the earlier one. I think that this is an improvement because it adds additional commercial space. It improves that corner. So it is, as others have said, a different question. For me, I do agree it is a good location for student housing, and our planning documents have identified this as a location for student housing. My one criticism would be, I wish we had this originally when we were doing this as opposed to having this as a part of an amendment process. I think it would have been better if we could have looked at the entire thing. I know that the developer didn't own or have a contract on that one corner at the time, but I wish we'd been able to see kind of the full project when we were talking about it earlier this year.
Thank you. If that's the end of discussion, then will the clerk please call the roll?
Egger Smith?
Aye.
Sutphen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Nay.
Oliver?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Moving on to action on this second ordinance, 2081. What is council's pleasure?
I move approval of ordinance 2081, and that's the right-of-way vacation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. What is our discussion? Okay, well, yeah, not a lot to say on that account. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sutphen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Egger Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to ordinance 2086, permitting an encroachment in town right-of-way at 411 Draper Road.
And Andrew Warren has the staff report. Fast forward for you, sorry about that.
So with an encroachment, whenever there's proposal of private improvements in a public right-of-way, it does require an encroachment. This is for a delivery ramp and walkway that would allow for deliveries in the 400 block of South Main Street and Draper Road, the alley for 411 Draper Road, which is proposed to be library, cafe, and Draper Road provisions. It is approximately 1,200 square feet in size, the encroachment area. It really breaks down to two areas. There's a surface encroachment of 152 feet by six feet, which allows for the surface ramp and walk to Miller Street, as well as a handrail to be built and a wall within the proposed area. There's also a subsurface encroachment area, which allows for the footer for the wall to be constructed. So not all of the encroachment will be above ground. The applicant would be responsible for restoring the pavement to the original width. And it does include the dumpster area that council may remember approving. And it does include the dumpster area that council may remember approving a previous proposal for an encroachment back in 2022. And that was much smaller. That was four feet by 11 inches and by 14 feet. On the screen, you'll see the area of the encroachment in its entirety in yellow. It really does expand the length of the 411 Draper Road to Miller Street. And this is a highlighted area, which overlays the improvements. So you could see where the dumpsters would be, as well as the wall and the walkway. And I'll zoom in here a little bit so it can be seen a little closer, a little clearer. And you could see the, again, the wall and the walkway down to Miller Street, which would allow for deliveries to the rear, not having to come to the front of the restaurant and store. So if approved, these details would be incorporated into a revised staff site plan that would be reviewed by staff. And that concludes my remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We have an applicant statement?
Members of planning, or town councils, sorry. Skip the planning commission status. Appreciate your time tonight. John Neal with Forsight Design. John Boyer and Katie Pritchard are here, as well as Braxton Cox. Would be happy to answer any questions you all have. And I think the 411 Library Café is a great name.
When do y'all expect you might open?
We plan on submitting a site plan here within the next week, week and a half, and then it'll be to Braxton working on the building, and John and Katie working on getting things prepared and built.
Great. Okay. Thank you. We have streamlined that process, have we not?
What's that, the?
Of submitting site plans and?
Yeah. The turnaround times are definitely faster now. Right? Yep.
They have a drive-through.
That's a good idea. Okay. Thank you. Public comment? Seeing none. What is council's pleasure on ordinance 2086?
I move approval of ordinance 2086.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there discussion?
Even though it's called an encroachment, I think it's a welcome one, so.
It's a wonderful idea.
Encroachment.
Okay. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Hager Smith?
Aye.
Sutphen?
Aye.
And now ordinance 2087, to amend Town Code, Section 12-309, to lower the speed limit on Prices Fork Road.
Carolyn Howard has the staff report.
Good evening. All right. This is presentation for ordinance 2087, to lower the speed limit on Prices Fork Road from Old Glade Road to Main Street, from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. We recently completed a speed study, which showed that pretty much everyone was driving in compliance with the 35 mile an hour speed limit. You're probably wondering, why are we recommending it to go down to 25 miles an hour? One of the reasons why, and I will highlight one particular intersection, there have been a significant increase in pedestrian crossings of Prices Fork Road, up 75% from 2019. In particular, Tom's Creek Road has over 5,000 pedestrians per day crossing Prices Fork Road. The reported crash data has increased somewhat. There have been eight pedestrian crashes with injuries, seven bicycle, and a total of 113 vehicular crashes. And again, as I noted, there's a 75% increase in pedestrian volume, as well as a 6.4 increase in vehicular volume. In conclusion, staff is recommending the decrease of the speed limit from Old Glade Road to Main Street, from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour, based on the increased pedestrian crossings, and also in consideration of the proposed redevelopments within the corridor that will certainly also increase those pedestrian and cyclist movements in the area. Any questions?
Since we've already got strong compliance in this, can council get an update at some point in the future after this is implemented to see if it actually has an impact on driver behavior?
We would have to implement another speed study, but we can certainly do that in a few years to see if that has done its job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have public comment tonight on ordinance 2087? Seeing none. What is council's pleasure?
I move approval of ordinance 2087.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there discussion?
I just want to say, you know, as it's known to my colleagues on the dais, as well as most staff in the room, I am an enthusiastic cyclist, as well as a regular walker. All of this is about vulnerable road users, whether you're a walker, runner, horse rider even. You know, there's proven studies nationally that say the lower the speed limit, the more survivability of accidents, because we know that at the end of the day, the people in the cars are not the ones that suffer when we have these interactions. So this is a great step, because, you know, what's illustrated by the study was that we just have a lot of people out there moving around, walking and riding their bikes. That's part of our goal, is to get people out walking, riding their bikes, and using the bus, and not in their cars. And the key is to make it safe for them to do that, and to make them feel safe to do that. And so I enthusiastically support this move.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson?
Aye.
Ford? I mean, sorry, Oliver?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Hager Smith?
Aye.
Sutphen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Okay. We're low on citizens tonight, so I think we're going to skip over citizen comment. Unfinished business. Okay. Moving on to new business. New business. Council announcements.
Well, this is the last chance I get to remind folks about our Friday night concerts. We still have three, July 11th, 18th, 25th, all Fridays, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on Henderson Lawn, and the music has been great and will continue to be great. There's one more classic movie at the Lyric on July 19th at 3:00 p.m. Other things that are happening between now and our next night town council meeting, Art at the Market will be July 19th, 9:00 to 2:00. Steppin' Out, our famous street fair, first weekend in August. So lots to do downtown.
Thank you. Are there others? Well, I will point out that, as is customary, council has a brief vacation at the end of July, and so the next time that we are together will be on August 5th for a regularly scheduled council work session, and that's at the Blacksburg Motor Company building. And then we will next be in these chambers on August 12th at 6:30. And with that, we are adjourned.